And this is Tuesday, March 21. Our first item is a public hearing. This is for the Simpson, 35 Hammond Ridge Road. An application for a site development plan approval to amend the site development plan approved to construct the pool on driveway. Sabrina, is this a continued public hearing or just opening it?
Yes, it is. It is a continued public hearing.
It is, okay. Because we started that way last time.
Lisa's not sure about that.
I checked, it isn't.
It's not?
We'll open the motion anyway.
We're opening now.
No extra pause.
All right, my apologies.
Okay, is there a motion then to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You made it from Japan.
We got in, thank you. We got in this morning. It's seven o'clock, eight o'clock in the morning for us. We could spend all day with you if you'd like.
Okay. We'll make this brief.
Thank you.
Anyway, I don't think we have any more information. But I guess we'll open it. Are there any comments from members of the public on this application?
There are no attendees.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members?
No.
We have a resolution before, so not seeing any comments. Is there a motion then to close the public hearing?
So moved, sorry.
All in favor? Aye. So we have a resolution drawn up here. And I think we've got the comments from our last meeting, including Dennis's comments about that one corner for the buffering. So I think that's incorporated in there. Did you guys have a chance to see the resolution?
Yep, we read it. It seems pretty straightforward.
Okay.
So thank you so much, yeah.
Okay, good. I think it is. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Everyone's helping getting this to the, hopefully getting this to the finish line.
Yep. So unless there are any comments or questions on the resolution, can we adopt the motion then to adopt the resolution?
So moved, second.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion's carried, so you're all set.
Good time. Thank you so much, everyone. We'll get all the rest of the things done. Thank you.
Yeah, there are some, yeah, there are some conditions that you have to satisfy, but from the standpoint of what's going on.
Book 'em home.
We'll get this buttoned up. So thank you again, everyone, and really appreciate it. Let you get to your, get the rest of your evening.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Take care. Bye.
So our next item is Holmes, 101 King Street. This is an application for a site development plan approval to convert an attic storage area to a studio apartment. We heard this on February 21. Did we? Was that a public hearing? So we have to open this public hearing. Okay, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. So we have the resolution, but we also have, Chuck, I think you provided us with some updated plans?
Yeah, we've got one coming up right now. Share screen. Got it? There it is.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, the updated plans are, well, are putting the area, the areas in the various residential units to confirm that it's, they're all less than 1,000 square feet. And we have areas of all of the residential and all of the businesses over here in the A, B, C, the various buildings. There's Building A, which is, which is office, and we have Building A, which are residential. That's up here in the top left of the corner showing those floor plans, which are under construction right now. And then we have Building B, which is way back here. It exists, nothing has changed. It's all office space, and it has that particular area and parking count required. Building C is Dr. Lopari's dentist office. That's all part of this whole parking area. And he has an office and two apartments, one upstairs in the attic and one in the lower level basement, opening out on grade. And those are the square footages in the areas of those two apartments and the office. Then there's Building B, which is, which is an existing building at the very, very rear of the property. You probably could see it if you look past the Verizon building on Lower, on Greeley, you could look past it and you'll see this building. It's a three-story building with apartments at the lower level, apartments on the top, a studio and office, well, office spaces on the bottom, mostly all office. You could see the area of each one of those offices. You could see it down here. The ground floor has 2,400 square feet of office space, and the apartments are five-bedroom, there's five one-bedroom apartments and one studio apartment. So that building has six units in it. And then there's Building A, and that's the topic of this application. What we've done, if you could see on the bottom left-hand side, we've made a picture of, I'll get it bigger. Made a picture of the existing homes, now it's JLR real estate. We've raised the roof. There's the existing roof. I could, I don't know if you could see that? Maybe I could annotate it. You can? Okay, great. We've raised the roof four feet on either side, and then made the rafters go back to the same pitch. Doesn't get any higher at the pit, at the peak. But we do have, we're 16-foot high at grade at this part of the building. There's other parts of the building that, as you go around it, the grade is always up and down, up and down, up and down. We have pretty much an average height of 21 to 23 feet. I will verify that as I complete, and I have to do that in the resolution before you sign the plans. I'll take care of that exact number for you.
What's your height inside the proposed apartment?
Oh, well, here's, this is what it is. Here is, see this line, right? It's a five-foot high. At five-foot high, we start counting area. And then it has, it slopes up to a seven-foot-six ceiling and goes across and then back down again, the five-foot high. And inside that five-foot high volume is where we count the area. And that's what I show here. You can see the area of this apartment doesn't go all the way to the outside. It always, it stays in the inside by about three feet right here. And so, so we have an apartment, and you get to it by this door on the side of the building off of the existing parking lot. And you go up the steps and you're into the apartment. It's a studio.
You're gonna have central air in this apartment up there?
Actually, yes. We have, we have, in this building, we've just installed enough electrical and enough equipment for ductless. It's a ductless heating and cooling system.
Okay.
There's no, there's central air up there now, but we're taking it all out. It's a, it's a hydro unit.
Holy, thank you. Okay, great. Any comments or questions from board members? Any, are there any comments or questions from members of the public on this application?
There are no candidates.
Okay. So we're not seeing any. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, second.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We have a resolution that's been prepared by staff for this application. Bob, are you okay with the conditions that you've got set forth here in section four of the resolution? Four and five? I guess it's fairly standard. I think, Robert? Well, there you are. Okay, now we're hearing, yep.
Where do you go?
Are you referring to A, B, and C revisions to the final site plan or not?
Yes, at the bottom of page two.
Yeah, the, I did show the size of the residential use. I have areas of all the uses.
You just seem, yeah, providing floor plans as a condition. We normally see that now, but...
Well, yeah, I would have to show a floor plan of the studio, I would suspect, which I would be, I'll be working on right away. But that's why I will show that as part of building permit also.
Okay, if that's customary to put it off of that print, that's fine. Okay. Any other questions on the resolution? If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion's carried. All set, Chuck, on that one?
All right, thank you.
Then we have, our next item is Chai, 45 South Greeley Avenue. This is an application for, what?
He's also Chai.
Chai, okay. Application for a site development plan approval to convert a second-floor office space into a one-to-two-bedroom apartment. I think we had a, excuse me, a public hearing on this. We closed it, so all we have is just the resolution. So unless there are any issues or questions on the resolution, should we entertain a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Okay. We move now to our next item, and that's the informal appearance before the board. This is for the Panetti application. This is to Main Street, Kisco Park. This is application for a site development plan approval and preliminary subdivision approval for construction of a new single-family residence. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. So, Lisa, do you have everyone's name and address?
I do. It's on the screen.
Yeah, your plans are on the screen.
Oh, okay. We have additional copies here. We do have a few items which remain open, which are being taken care of. The lower sevens, who takes care of the wetlands area, is bringing us, sending us an updated letter with the current status of the wetlands, proximity to where we are. You have drawings?
Yes.
I have fresh copies of drawings.
Sure, if you wish. Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Make sure you have one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Do you copy?
I'm good, I have them.
Oh, okay. To you, sir? Yes, I'm good. Oh, very good, okay. Arrangements to be made now for testing the earth for the type of earth and the absorption qualities for the for the drainage of the house and the, and the, and the footing drains. So that will be done in the next, within the next two weeks. So that, at the moment, it is still a sort of thing. Mr. Panetti, the owner, is in contact with the town engineer to coordinate these arrangements. Other than that, we're updating the house apartment, which was previously approved for the set system. And as you can see, it will be a one-family dwelling. And it's, it will be a conforming lot.
Okay, great.
So that's the size of what we're at at the moment.
Okay, super.
Okay.
Yep, Sabrina, do you want to run through your comments?
Sure, just to kind of make up.
From staff?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay.
No, that's okay. Just to kind of run through, this is a subdivision application to create a new lot with a new house. There's an existing house and barn structure on, on the one lot, and there's an existing barn on the second lot, which is planned to be demolished. In accordance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act, this is a Type II action, so there's no further environmental review required.
Sabrina, this is a sub, two-lot subdivision, right?
Yes.
For a subdivision, we would be unlisted.
So sorry, it's an unlisted action. There is, there is one existing house, and there would be one, an additional house. The, there's some conflicting information regarding the lot area that needs to be adjusted in the subdivision application. There's a note that the land area is 1.723 acres on the lot area plan. It is 1.743, just to clarify that information. There is a combined coverage calculations worksheet from 2021 for both lots. We really need to separate the coverage for each individual lot and do a sheet for both the existing lot and then the new lot that is being created, so that will need to be provided. In review of the zoning conformance table on Plan S1, the minimum square foot requirement of a lot in the R-quarter acre zone needs to be adjusted. It needs to be changed, it's not correct. And the zoning table is missing front, rear, and side yard setback labels and existing distances. So that's something that should be included in the table and noted on the plans. And then the lot with information should also be included. It's all in my memo. And all of that should be both in the zoning table and dimensioned on the plans. There should also be a footnote added to the front yard setback for the existing lot, which is 36.1. It appears that there's a pre-existing non-conforming front yard setback, unless you guys have received a variance. I could not find one, as the house dates back to 1850. Dennis is going to speak to the wetlands on the property, so I have no, no further comments. There does not appear to be any tree removal. That's the end of my comments.
Okay, do we have any information regarding neighboring homes and the proximity of those? We customarily see those on these sketches, so that we just get some sort of feel what the distance might be. That would be helpful for us to have.
I do have that, yes. I don't have it here with me.
Sure, sure.
When next submission, I will make a copy of that for you.
Very good.
So you'll have a relationship to what we're proposing as comparisons to the neighboring.
Yep.
You will take, I will take very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So Dennis, you had some...
We're not done here.
Oh, okay.
It's not that easy.
There hasn't been any bloodletting. How many? Dennis, you want to run through your comments?
Sure. So I know that when I went at that, I know Zuma Lupe Devens did an update in terms of the locating of the wetlands. So when you arrive on site, you certainly see those stakes, but other than that, there was no other submission. So if she has the historical context and did the updating, it would be nice to see all of that, you know, so that it helps to justify it. Perfect.
They were twice, the surveyor surveyed the original twice, and we state everything when she, when she put the flags.
Okay.
And he mentioned to me yesterday that the question you had about the flags.
Yeah, I may not see that, it's an extra one, yeah.
He corrected on the field.
Okay.
He said everything's done. So because I, I said, I don't know, the flags, so they, so he did that, so they're in place. We get a letter from, again, from the sevens, you, and...
Okay, I mean, does she have, I mean, she did the original delineation when you first came to us from Paul's, right? So it would be nice to have, you know, assuming from her files, her archives, to have that original delineation, because really, to justify all of these, I need more than just a letter. I, you know, and I know she's updating the original.
I'll tell her to give me a copy of the delineation that she...
Now, with the updated, that would be fine, that would be helpful. Yes. Okay, so that was, so then, I was gonna go on to say that, you know, these were just my verifications. If there was issue that you felt the wetland didn't bump out in that area, I'd be happy to meet, but if you're accepting of that, then I'm accepting of that, and that moves on from the demarcation of the, of the wetland and non-wetland boundary. I felt some of the, there were some spots in this eager short form that were not completed. I didn't really list out specifically what those are, but, you know, where those blanks are included. I know there seems to be as-built stormwater controls, but we also typically see, you know, for the execution of the work, the stormwater management and sedimentation control during construction, you know, erosion controls where stockpiles are gonna be, access egress, ingress egress. So this, this is just sort of like a finished plan. We need to, you know, see, see some of those requirements during the construction phase as well. And I also just question, just from seeing, you know, from doing the wetlands and looking at this portion of the site and the construction that you're gonna do, which is fine, if you're gonna remove trees, we would, we would need to just have to include those as part of the tree removal permit application to the, to the board. Okay, so...
And if you take the trees down, then there's gonna be a requirement to re-vegetate.
Definitely, trees to be removed, there is only one. I'm meeting an officer tomorrow, tomorrow, or there's engineer, and I'll show to him. There is a couple dead trees on the ground, and where the location of the house, there are nothing to be removed. And then in the front, there are big trees. And on the side, where we're doing the test hole for the retention of water, over there, there are some small trees, four inches, that said we can replace it with other. There is no major...
But, but as far as, you know, like what I was sort of alluded to earlier, for your, you know, during, you know, it's not just the finished product, like during the construction phase, right? I mean, there's vehicles, there's turning, there's, so, so even, even if trees are gonna remain, we still may require certain protections for those existing trees, so they don't suffer damage.
Without any question.
So that's why we want to keep those on the plan.
We talk about the plans and...
Yes.
... prevention.
Okay.
I am very...
I'm a Lorax for the, that's why I have to worry about it.
I don't, I don't do just the area and, you know...
Understood, okay.
No runoff, no nothing, it's all just clean, regleaning. So I, no, no problem.
Okay.
You can be assured of that, because I'm all the time...
Oh, thank you.
Like this man.
Can I see it?
Okay, I can, I can. You can do the mic, you know, you can tell it.
Thank you.
I meant, I was looking at my mic, thank you.
So, you'll need the trees set forth on the plan as part of inventory, right?
Yes, they would need to be located, because, as I said, not just for finished construction, but for maneuverability around the site. Where are those trees in relation to that? And would we need protection included?
Which is part of the tree application.
Yes.
Normally, you see that on the same plan, unless it gets a little bit too crazy and can't read it, or we just do a second sheet, I guess, but we give that to your discretion. Anything else, Dennis?
I'm soft, no, thank you.
Okay. Bob, you had some comments?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman, and members of the board. I broke it up into stormwater and general comments, basically with the stormwater comments. Unfortunately, Chapter 108A references New York State DEC Stormwater Manual, which references TR-55 methodology. Rational formula is not really accepted anymore for stormwater management, because it doesn't have really the methodology requirements that HydroCAD has and TR-55. So you'll have to have someone do it based on TR-55 with the curve numbers and SCS as well. There's a couple of things that should be in the report. The stormwater runoff mitigation for 100-year storm or precipitation is 9.23. I believe you have much lower numbers on STA. ST2B, submit soil test. We're gonna need soil test in the vicinity of the dry wells, which seems to be where you show them, but you'll have to do a different type of format. Most of the time, they use Coltech as opposed to the old-style concrete basins, which are quite heavy and very difficult to install. So you'll have to contact Terry Row to do deep test and per test where you think the dry wells should go. ST2E, the subject property is located within the East Hudson. Obviously, they have to show water quality as well, and that's based on P is 2.8 inches, which is the run, rainfall amount, based on a one-year storm. And also, two, you have to clearly show the existing impervious that's gonna remain, if we remove, and the net new impervious in your report as well. In addition to that, clearing and limits of disturbance appears to be more than 5,000 square feet. And because you're in the East Hudson Crow and Reservoir, you're gonna need a SWIP from DEC, an acknowledgement letter, and a NOI for the erosion and sedimentation control, which to Dennis's point, does require a full-blown erosion and sedimentation control plan, which has not been submitted to date. My GC comments, general comments. You should demarcate the sightline triangles on Main Street, minimum distance 200 feet. The sightline triangles should be 10 feet in from the edge of pavement. Anything within those sightline triangles should be cleared of any vegetation that would obstruct the sightlines, looking up, looking left, and looking right down Main Street, minimum 200 feet. Test GC1, GC2, evidently, looking at this, there seems to be some contours that are missing. I would highly recommend that you put those back in. They're missing from 338 to 352, and it's kind of difficult for me to try to figure out what the grades of the driveway are without the grades of the existing. Also, two, GC3, you should provide a driveway profile. Obviously, you're gonna need a street opening permit from DPW, and also a tapping permit to tie into your service line you show on the left of the map, tying into the water main. That water main should be indicated on the size and type. By the way, you would have to submit a report to DPW for their review to make certain that the sizing is correct for, for the, basically, fire suppression system that you would be required to put in the new residence, not unless it's a modular. Sabrina, I mentioned this before, you have been a subdivision map prepared by a New York State licensed land surveyor. I believe you submitted one a while back, but I haven't seen one of late. Provide copies, too, of the approved onsite wastewater treatment system for this from Westminster, Hattie Department of Health. And my last comment, GC7, is basically standard notes we like to see on the site plans regarding the SWIP as built, that are required for the stormwater, any type of fill that's delivered to the site with a manifest, and also the inspection that we require to do for the stormwater mitigation. And those are my comments for tonight, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Any questions on any of those? So those are the things we need for your next submission. So a little bit of homework, but...
A bit to do, yes.
Yes. But, you know, whenever you're set and have it set for a re-submission, we're gonna hear it again and see what you can do with this, okay?
Is possibly to get...
Now, at some point, this will have to go to public hearing as well, so if I have another inquiry at least, and then I have to go to the public hearing. All right?
No problems, I will send those to, I'll send them.
Oh, wonderful. I'm now?
I can send them by now.
Yeah.
Or I could send them to Mr. Panetti.
I don't worry.
Okay.
Fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We look forward to seeing you again. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the BACH capital application has been pulled. We made some issues there, so we're not going to hear about this evening. And I guess the minutes, we did not actually get the minutes in time, so we're not gonna have those minutes. So the last thing we have really is just something that's not on the agenda, but if Jennifer and Sabrina, if you could just provide us with a quick update in terms of what's going on with 50 North Greeley. We can't get into any substantive discussion. The applicant's not here, we didn't notice it. It is an application, but just as an update, you know, we sent in some requests, and if you could tell us where we might be on the model, or the response has been from the applicant, if any. Obviously, the town board has scheduled a public hearing on the legislation, I think, sometime in April, but that's about all I know. So if there's anything else that you can share with us, just as a quick update. but that's about all I know, so if there's anything else that you can share with us, just as a quick update to see where we are.
No, um, I, I can report on the status of the model. The town board has set up a public hearing on the legislation for April 11th, and the applicant, um, has been working on a model, they've received your comments, they've received comments from the town board regarding a model, and they're in the process of preparing such a model. And they're hoping to have it, uh, available for the public hearing on the 11th.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question about that? When you say they are preparing a model, is it, do you know if it is the model that we had recommended, or is it?
I do not know. I do not know.
So before that model gets built, because this is a model that, that, um, that the planning board asked for, in the context of being asked by the town board to give a recommendation on building height, to be sure that it's a model that the planning board will find useful. Can we see, um, either see some drawings, um, see the model that is being proposed to be built by the applicant before it gets built, so that we can make sure that we're getting what we think we need?
Uh, my understanding is that the applicant received your comments, um, and that the model, uh, will have the extent to capture 149 King Street, the King Street Hill, and 54 Hunts Place in relation to building all the buildings in between. I do, I do, I do know that they received your comments, and, um, my understanding is that the model, uh, has been in concept for a bit as it was first asked for by the town supervisor a while back. So they have been contemplating it, and your comments are informing them.
So, now can I get an answer to my question?
I can't give you an answer to your question, I do not know. I can take it back.
Could you, could, could you get an answer to my question?
I will attempt.
Instead of, it would be good if we had an advocate for what it is that, that we think we need to do. And it's the only way in which I can get that message, well, the way I'm getting that, that question through, that ask through right now is through you.
And, and I'm happy to take that ask back, absolutely.
Okay. And when can we get an answer?
I, I can't answer that, I will take it back.
That's fine. You know, if we don't get one quick, then I'll just go ahead and call the town supervisor and, and get an answer. Because it's entirely possible that, that, I mean, next time we get together is two weeks from now.
Right.
It's entirely possible that this model's going to get built, and we aren't going to have an opportunity to see what it's going to do. This is critically important. So, um, and it, it seems as though it's being processed. I understand and appreciate the fact that our ask is being, uh, put into the mix, but I don't know what the cake is going to look like when it gets baked. And I think that we need to see that first before it gets, we need to understand what it's going to be before it gets baked. So I'd like to interrupt the process enough to figure out what it is. And if you would, thank you.
I, I will address this first thing tomorrow for you.
I went to the WOMP on last week, and I went to the design one.
I'm sorry, where did you go? I didn't hear it.
Uh, Westchester Municipal, you know, for.
Yes, 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 yes.
And it was very interesting, because actually, uh, further to your comment, Eldad, about some of the issues and some of the various, uh, software that's out there. I mean, they actually had, uh, you know, the big goggles on, and you could see all these different things. So it was very interesting, so they can really do a very good job, apparently, with computerization, so that we'll have a model, but also they should feel free, I think. It would be great, I, I think, if they would use some of this new technology, because they can, they can move these things around to, to comment, so it would be, I think, helpful in several processes. It's up to them, of course, but, um, it was very timely that I went to that one session, and, uh, I was, I was saying, ah, Eldad told me about this.
Yes, the VR.
Reality, yeah, VR.
Really?
I've seen it in person, I, I, I have, uh, uh, an acquaintance who has a company that does this, and I, I've seen the samples, and what's fun about it is you get to do it on-site. You're standing there, and so you turn, you see the existing conditions around you, and then hold up the screen, the iPad, or the phone, or whatever. It's not perfect, but it gives you a feeling, because I think one of the hardest parts for anyone is, is sort of understanding, and the model helps with that, take it from 2D to 3D, but understanding what does it mean to stand there? And, you know, I've been in many, you know, meetings where people discuss a height from 100 feet to 125 feet, but people don't really understand what is, what is the impact on a, at the street scale between 10 feet, 100 feet, 200 feet? And it's not their fault, it's hard to, it was a hard concept, but it, be able to somehow touch that and visualize it to extend it.
Yeah, so I, I.
That would be, uh, would be wonderful if I could do that, but again.
It sounds great to me. I just like, excuse me. As long, as long as we understand that in order for the public to actually appreciate it, they need to make the effort to go down and put on the goggles. I think it's useful for, you know, us and the town board and so on to understand that as well. I think it'd be great as a supplement to.
Yeah.
The model, the model itself.
That's, and I'll do the reverse. I, so in essence, the model that we want is not a model that's fixed.
But it's, right.
It, it, you know, it has to be so that pieces can be added, height can change, things like that.
Right, and, and the other, the other thing I'd just like to say, we're, apparently, we're saying if they want to do this. And I don't know whether that's an appeal to the applicant, or an appeal to the town board, because the town board is in a position to say, well, you have to do this.
Yeah, of course, right.
And so.
Yeah, we've indicated to the town board that we really want this.
Right.
But it's really the town board's call.
So it's our appeal to the town board, not to the applicant?
Yeah.
I, I.
So can I just?
What we are asking for is a block model, am I understanding that correctly, a block model, which you can move up and down?
Yes, this has been in the record of our meetings.
Right.
I mean, they are available online.
But I'm just trying to understand what the scope.
So it's like Legos, so we can build it down?
Yes.
Just, so, so it sounds like there's some sort of model in progress, but as far as just process, uh, the town board has put a hearing on the calendar for, uh, April 11th, for the zoning legislation, yes?
Correct, I think so, is that, that's the case, Jennifer and Sabrina?
That's correct, yes, for the proposed local law, yes.
And, and as far as processes in general, what, what else, what comes next, what's our role, sort of, where, what's the big picture here?
Sure, so the, uh, town board has scheduled to open the public hearing on April 11th. Um, I think we can all, it's safe to assume that it's not going to close that night. Um, it will extend for, for, you know, a, a couple sessions, um, as part of that.
Do you meet on April 11? Our board, the board?
No.
We meet on the 18th. Okay, okay, good.
So that's the required public hearing on the legislation. Sort of, um, proceeding parallel to that is the town board's review as lead agency pursuant to SECRE. Um, so the petitioner, um, has submitted, um, some documents related to, to its secret review, to the town board's secret review, those are all posted online. Um, and I imagine that during the course of this public hearing, we're going to be gathering additional information that informs that secret process. Uh, the town board will likely be making additional asks of, of the petitioner, um, in order to complete the secret review. So that is an ongoing process. There's been no secret determination made, so no negative declaration or positive declaration. Either way, um, it's still, we're still in a information collecting stage. Um, the next step.
Jeffrey, on that, was, was there, um, was there a scope that was actually prepared?
Nope, because there's been no positive declaration. The scoping document would only happen if there's been a positive declaration, and an EIS is going to be prepared.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, so once the public hearing closes, um, at some point, the, the town board will make its secret determination, either a POSDEC or a NEGDEC, um, and if it's a NEGDEC, proceed to make a decision on the legislation. If it's a POSDEC, we're going to have to, uh, or not we, but the petitioner, uh, will have to prepare an environmental impact statement.
So is there any way to, I mean, I think I know where some people want this to go, but is there any way to, do you have any feeling, or can you share any feeling that others have in this process, where it's going with respect to POSDEC, type 1, type 2, POSDEC, NEGDEC? Is there any, based on the information that's being put together now, one can, I would think, absolutely get a sense of whether, for me, I would think, whether this is going to go one way versus the other? I wonder if there is any projection that's, that you may have on that?
I think no, no, no projection, I think it would be speculative to, 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 you know, to make a projection, especially because I have not attended nor spoken with, with any members of the town board about this.
That's fair.
Other than the working group meeting. So, um, I've reviewed the documentation that the, that the petitioner has submitted, um, and I think it's, it's, it's too early to, to make that call. Um, and ultimately, it's the town board's call to make.
So can I go a little bit further then into the process? Uh, so what you said is that, correct if I'm wrong, but it's going to be, go through the draft legislation and as many public hearing meetings that there need to be in order for the town board to feel as though they have the information they need in order to shape that. Close the public hearing on that. Have a, at that point, I guess, still a draft legislation that then is, and that then is, um, the SECRE is applied to that legislation, and the POSDEC, you know, whatever declaration comes out of that, happens at that point. And then, if, I'm sorry, let me just keep going, and then, if, if that's, maybe that's wrong, but if, if, if the, if the, uh, if the EIS is all, everything's all approved, then the legislation gets passed, officially gets passed, and the zoning is in place for the site plan to be, uh, uh, submitted. Is that the correct, correct process?
That's sort of, so the, uh, you tried, I know. It was a good try. Um, so the SECRE determination, the POSDEC or the NEGDEC, frankly, frankly can happen anytime. There's no set, um, you know, they don't have to wait for the public hearing to open, they don't have to wait for the public hearing to close. That can happen as soon as the town board feels that it has enough information in order to make that determination. So that, that's the SECRE part of it.
So that's.
The town board can't, um, act on the legislation until it concludes SECRE, right? Before it has to do either the NEGDEC or issue a POSDEC and go through the whole EIS process and, um, end up with a finding statement. With respect to the drafts of the legislation, so we have a draft that the public hearing has been noticed upon. That's not to say that that is not going to change. It's, it's likely that that could change, provisions of that draft that's been noticed could very well change over the course of the public hearing. However, before the public hearing closes, the town board has to have a, a sort of a, a final legislate, a final piece of legislation before they can close the public hearing.
So if there's a final piece of legislation and the EIS isn't done yet, and the EIS comes back with significant impacts that need to be mitigated somehow, that causes the, the legislation, the final legislation to need to be changed, what happens then?
If the public hearing has been closed, and there's something in the process that causes that legislation to change significantly, there'd have to be another public hearing. The public hearing would have to be reopened.
Okay, thank you. So my, my question is, and I, I just, we, uh, I think this board's, as a group, been asking for it. I know I've been asking for it for day, from day one. By what measure is the, by, by what criteria is the EIS and the review of the, the public review of the draft legislation, what is being brought to the table so that the public in this part of the process can understand what they're getting if they pass this legislation? If the, if, if the, the EIS has to have something that it's measuring. So it's been, I'm sorry, so it's measuring, uh, density, it's measuring so many square feet, so many parking units, so many parking spaces, I suppose, that it has to have that in order to, to be able to understand the impacts. Those are all numbers, but those numbers really don't mean anything to people other than maybe a sense of alarm, oh my goodness, 45 units, we can't have that. Or, oh my goodness, so many cars on the road, we can't have that. Or 45 units is okay, but they don't know. They don't know because they can't see it, and they don't know because they, they, they. And the problem with it, in my view, is that this piece of legislation is specifically, this draft, this text, new text to go to the zoning code, is specifically being put in and drafted for this specific project. That's the whole reason this is happening, because there is a proposal for the specific project. So I keep on asking, and I guess that it's not going to happen, but in the process of looking at the legislation, people ought to know what they're getting. And I think that you don't have to have a site plan review if you don't want to have a site plan review. But is the, in the process of reviewing the legislation, does the town board intend to have a presentation of the actual design so that people know what the legislation actually is going to mean? Is that, do you know if that's going to happen? Sabrina, anybody?
I don't know what the, the town board is planning as far as the presentation at the public hearing. But I just want to be careful of a couple things. So one, we, we keep talking about an EIS, but there's been no positive declaration. So it's, it's just the, generally the secret review, I just want to make sure that that's clear for the record.
No, no.
Don't want the public to think that there's an environmental impact statement forthcoming when there's been no determination.
I, I totally understand that, that's even more reason for them to see what they're getting.
So, um, this is, when you have, and this is a, a process that, um, is, I won't say common, because it, it doesn't happen every day, it's not as common as your typical secret review. But it is a process that occurs, um, when you have a particular project, a petition, particular property owner that is seeking a zoning change, whether it's a map change or a text change. Here, we have a text change, and that property owner submits a petition to the, the legislative board, the town board here, for that change. Now, there's a couple different ways that that can be processed. One, the way that, that the town is processing it now, where legislation comes first. If and when that's adopted, then the applicant submits their substantive, you know, land use application, their special permit, their site plan, their subdivision, whatever it may be. The other process is when the two things are, are considered in tandem. Um, when the, the actual application that's contemplated by the proposed legislation is filed and is being processed, um, right, right alongside the review of that local law. That process allows for the type of review, Tom, that, that you're, you're speaking to, having those very concrete, specific numbers. We don't have that, that's not the process that the town is, 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 um, is proceeding down. We have the legislation first, followed by the application. In that instance, what the, the, the lead agency does is they review the secret impacts on more of a conceptual level. Not to throw out like a bugaboo word, but similar to the Form-based code, which was, you know, more of a generic conceptual, um, type review, where we didn't have the, the, you know, concrete numbers, um, for each category of impact, but it was more of a general review. That's, that's the process contemplated by SECRE here, that the SECRE review would be on a conceptual level. We have the, the, you've seen the, the plans for the proposed project that the, the legislation is, um, is sort of, is, is based upon. So that's sort of the, the concept under which the SECRE review of the legislation would undergo.
Thank you.
Jennifer, can I ask, can I ask a question? Because you, you had me until, until the very end. And I, I got a little, a little tripped up, uh, in my own mind. Um, the SECRE review, uh, or the SECRE review, um, is on the zoning action alone?
Yeah.
It's on the, the legislation.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and informed by the concept plans that have been submitted.
Okay, there you go, so when do we get to, get the plans in the process to, that's the back, that's the backup? Is that the backup for, for the zoning text? I think you just said that, so why isn't that visible in this process right now?
Well, the plans, that, that's what's on the website, and I think that was what was circulated, right? That Sabrina, what?
Yes, that was, you were all giving copies of those plans.
Right, but I think the issue that.
But this is a, I'm sorry, this is a public review. Yeah, we get access to that, to, to them, the town board has access, staff has access to it, but this is a.
It's the same way the public has access to all of the information that you've reviewed for applications on your agenda. It's the same way the public has access to all of the information that you've reviewed for applications on your agenda tonight. The public has access to all of the information that's associated with the, the, the NG zero legislation and the concept plans. All, all of that is online.
You know what? I know that. You don't have to keep saying that. You don't, you, you, please just try and listen to my point.
I'm, I'm trying. I'm sorry for missing your, your point. I'm, I'm trying to be responsive.
Let me, let me just try one more time. You're going to have, they are going to have, the town's gonna have public hearings where they review the zoning text. And that hearing is going to have the zoning text in front of them. And supporting that, or the reason for that are these concept drawings that are online. Why is that, is the review of the zoning text not include a presentation by whoever of, of the concept drawings in the public hearing so that people who aren't gonna go online to find this stuff, who they can actually see what is being presented?
I did say that it wouldn't. I, I, I never said that that was not gonna be part of the public hearing. I said, I can't speak to that because I, I, I don't know what the town board has planned, but I never said that that was not gonna be part of the presentation.
It seems to me, Tom, that that, uh, unfortunately, unfortunately, that's within the purview of the town board to make that requirement to make the process go that way now.
I know that.
I think our memo has asked that we, we do the other, the other way. We've, we've been talking about this a long time. We try to get the, the site plan in at the same token. I don't know what more to do, other than we can send another memo and say, uh, here we are again. But ultimately, it's the town board's roadshow. Uh, they make the call on it. Um, we may disagree with it. We can raise it ourselves at the public hearing as, as residents, et cetera. Uh, I agree with you in terms of, I've, I've agreed with you right from the get-go in terms of what I think should be done. Maybe we haven't made it as clearly understood on, on the, with the town board. I don't know. Maybe we've failed to communicate it, uh, as well as we could have or should have. But I agree with you. It's, it's, th- there's a big blank space in the process.
And I, I don't wanna, again, I just, I don't want it to, to be misconstrued that, that there's been any indication that that's not gonna be part of this process. I just, I have, I have not spoken to.
Jennifer and I are just not ma- privy to the, to the, what's happening at the town board.
Like you, I would assume, myself, I would assume that that should be part of the, the public hearing. That should be part of a presentation at the public hearing. I, I agree with you. If that helps. But I, it's not up to me. I don't sit with the town board.
No, it's not up to you to make their decisions. I, it's not up to us to make their decisions.
Right.
But it seems to me that, that it's, we've made it very, very clear. And I, I'm not saying that they're not gonna do this, but we've made it very, very clear that we think this ought to happen. And the longer we wait to find out if they're gonna do it or not, the more the clock is ticking where in the end it doesn't happen. And I'm not asking you to speak for them or Sabrina to speak for them. I guess what I'm asking is some advocacy to find out for us, for, for everybody to sit around and say, well, gee, I don't know what they're doing. Yeah, it's probably the right thing to do, but I don't know what they're doing. We're not serving the town. The people we think we're supposed to serve by just saying, well, gee, okay, we'll see you in two weeks. Uh, really would be good if we could at least focus on the specific asks that we think are really important at this point in the process, just to ask them, you know, are you going, what are you gonna do? Can you, can you tell us if you're going to have a presentation of the material that actually informs the people about what the legislation is all about? And for them to say, well, gee, you guys sent us that memo. I mean, we've sent them a couple, a number of memos. The zoning text, uh, comments in particular, and it's like they've turned it over. And I'm sorry to be strident and upset about this, and I probably can tell I'm upset about it, but I'm getting to the point where I'm getting a little bit worried about this process. I mean, we saw this huge blow up over the form-based code not long ago. I think we wanna be careful, really careful about how this, about how this goes. And make it as transparent as possible in the interest of trying to all get together and solve this particular challenge on North Greeley. I think everybody wants to see that happen. So I'm just a little bit nervous that this is gonna be silenced until we just don't have an opportunity to, to find a course correction that we think might be in the benefit of everybody.
One suggestion as they, as we get closer to the hearing, I would, I would suggest that something is pasted around on the, you know, bulletin boards in this building. Something that, okay, this is gonna be discussed in the, uh, in the hearing. So people can get at least a chance to raise questions, answer, I don't understand this. You know, because in a public hearing, the public can be heard. So something needs to be advanced outside of the, uh, the thirty people or so that know about this.
Well, I think that's, um, especially true because the public hearing will correctly state that it's a public hearing about the legislation. That's really, yes, it is, but ultimately the legislation is really the project. So if, if we don't have the information that surrounds that, uh, that information, I, I think it's, it would help the process. Again, we're, we're just talking about process. We can't talk about substance at all, but the application, but these are, I think, good points. I think we've raised these before, but, uh, I, I guess we, we, we should continue to push for these. And there, there's a reason why we asked for the model. It was just, again, it's information that will, that will inform us, inform the public, et cetera. We know what we're talking about.
I guess, uh, the, the response I keep getting from everybody is, well, this is the way it's done. And, I mean, one of the things you learn pretty early in life, if, if, if you're learning, I think, valuable lessons is that's often one of the worst reasons to do something. And in this particular case, it seems to me that this is a very, very special project, which is going to have tremendous impact in town, which actually has, is going to have, if not yet, I believe going to have a lot of people in town wanting to know about it. And the, the, I believe that the town board has the ability to shape this process in order to make it more trans- the current term is transparent, but make it give a better in, informed venue for, or place for the information to come out for the people and everybody, including us, to really sort of work together to get it done. So every time I hear, well, this is the way it's normally done, unless it's in particular a matter, matter of law, which we're not talking about here. We're talking about, there's certain things which are the legal process, but that doesn't mean you can't manipulate it and insert, uh, different, um, different points where you can get more information out and do it in a, in a somewhat different sequence. Bring the site plan forward. You don't have to have a technical review of it, but make it clear what's going on there so people know what they're getting. If they, you know, if the, if the zoning gets passed. So I, I,
Well, I, 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 I actually heard Jennifer say something differently, that this is not necessarily the way it's done. It can be done in different ways. Which I think is, is good to hear, because there, there is time to do it, I think, differently. Um, I mean, I, I heard Jennifer say that normally you would do these things together. So it's not that this is the way it's normal done. It seems almost like if, if this is the way it's being done, that's, that's assuming that's, that's going one way or not another, whatever. Um, it's not the normal way. The normal way is in fact to consolidate this and you do secret, you do site, and you do it together so that you have a real project in front of someone. Albeit, we understand there's legislation involved, but legislation is just one leg of the stool. And this, in this case, it's the entire rocking chair of this. So that's the problem.
Yeah, well, the normal way, there's, this I mistaken there. What's special, there, there is a, a site plan review for an application that maybe rises to the level of needing secret, right? But it's within existing zone, but the impacts are such that you need to. And that process is one in which you actually are reviewing a design, a plan in the context of existing zone. What's different about this one is that it's zoning, which is a zoning legislation which is going through, which is not the specific designing.
Right.
So there is the discretion of the town board to say, well, we don't need to look at it. And I'm saying that just because you don't need to do it, doesn't mean that you shouldn't.
Of course, I, I think we all agree, and I think Jennifer's saying the same thing, that she, she would prefer to see that anyway. I'm sorry, it's almost like March Madness. I'm filling Jennifer's brackets for her.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, there's not a normal way or, or a normal way. I've seen it happen both ways. Um, probably this is equally on either side. Um, you know, having the legislation come first and then the, the project or, you know, in tandem. Um, so I just wanna make sure that there's one way that's more normal than the other.
That's great.
Some sort of tandem connected, you know, review. And we've been saying that for a while, and, and we haven't heard no. But, you know, there is some concern that as we, as we move this thing further, you, you almost get to a, you know, pocket veto type of situation where it just occurs.
Well, it seems like it, it is occurring, right? I mean, there, there, there is a, a hearing date on April eleventh just to review the zoning legislation. Tom's point is, even if that's the case, there should be some
Yeah.
Site plan presentation and review that goes along with it, even though it is not officially a site plan review process that is happening at the same time, that it would help inform the public and the stakeholders and the decision makers.
Everyone.
Uh, and, and I, I think we can all agree on that. Um, but we don't, we haven't heard that that's not going to be happening, but we haven't heard that that's going to be happening either.
Right.
Right? Right? Am I, am I, uh?
That's my concern.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I agree. Plaster it all around. Some people can see it. There in the downtown section, there, if there be places, you could put it in the windows if, uh, if we have a, a building or something that's not being occupied. But the people should get a sense of what is this? And then there would be more interest in it. I would think, the more you can spread it, even in town hall, and like people come in to, I don't know, pay something, uh, or sit down before the judge because they ran a red light or whatever. Then, then stuff might be around that, you know, people could say, what is that?
You know, it's a, it's a hard line to walk because, because the, the choice to just advance the zoning or, or to do it sequentially as opposed to at the same time, right? To advance the zoning legislation first and then later, uh, you know, review, um, a land use application that then is pursuant to the zoning legislation that is already in place. That's a, a way to do it, but what, what's challenging here is it sort of cuts both ways, right? Is that if you're just reviewing the zoning legis- legislation, you can't, you know, th- there is some sort of plausible viability that we're not approving a project. Right? We're, we're, it's, you're holding this project at arm's length. That we're only approving the zoning legislation, which is important because it has to stand on its own, right? The zoning legislation, we talked about this, it could be a new owner or a change of plans, or the economy could change drastically, or land use patterns. Working patterns, or anything can happen, right? As we've learned, unfortunately, in recent years, that things change in a heartbeat. And so there, that's relevant and, and, and it does, is a valid argument to say the zoning is, is important on its own. But the zoning, as Jennifer points out, and as we've discussed, i- it, it doesn't exist in a vacuum. The seeker, the secret review has to base its numbers on something. It, it bases on a number of units, on a number of cars, on, on a height, on shadow impacts, on traffic, on, on all these categories that, that the environmental review considers. But it, it's, it's, that's not based on zoning legislation. That's based on some concept plans. So it's, it's, it's this sort of push and pull that, that is, it's a, it's a challenge to handle. Um, and I, I guess a lot of our, you know, consternation comes from, from sort of the conflict that exists in, in, in setting up this way.
Good.
Yeah.
Nice points. So, um, just, I watched the, um, town board meeting from the other night. I think it was the delayed one. It was on Wednesday night because of the snowstorm. Which was just last week. And in bringing the, um, the, um, proposal to open up the public hearing next week, and not next week, but on the eleventh for the zoning legislation, there was some, uh, Ed made some statements that I just, I, I, I'm trying to, uh, just need some help with it because he said that there was a tremendous amount of, of work, a tremendous amount of analysis and deliberation based on a mountain of data that the board has been reviewing for years as a foundation, I think. He was using it as a foundation for, you know, now we can move forward on the zoning legislation. And, okay, that's fine, but is that tremendous amount of work, that mountain of data, uh, that analysis deliberations, is all that information going to be brought into the zoning, the presentation of the zoning text to justify it? Uh, is it going to be brought into the EIS review?
If there's any EIS review.
I, I'm not saying you have the answer to that. This is a rhetorical question.
Thank you.
For, um, posing it to the, the, the town board who, and the town board's, um, attorneys, uh, who are advising them on the process. Because if that data's available and that's a justification for moving forward, I think it would be good to have that. Whatever it is. I don't know what it is. I suspect I know what it is, but whatever it is.
I, again, I, I think we've gone over the fact that I wasn't at the meeting. I can't speak to, you know, what Ed said or didn't say, or what, what he was referring to. Um, so we'll chalk that up to a rhetorical question. The universe will answer.
To be taken, not rhetorical question, be taken lightly. I mean, you are, are, you're, you're, you're our, our counsel. You're our lawyer. This is the board's lawyer, and these are important, I think. These are important questions that need to be asked. And if it's not, if you aren't the vehicle for that, then I guess we'll just approach the town board directly. But I'd like to get it out there.
Look, I, I can tell you that any documents, testimony, all of your comments, all of the minutes of your meetings, including the minutes of the town board meetings, every meeting, every public meeting at which this topic has been discussed. Every document that's been submitted to the town related to this, this topic, including public comments, um, is, is all part of the quote-unquote record that's before the town, when, when it's reviewing, doing its secret review, doing its review of the legislation. So that, that I can definitively say as a matter of law that that is the case.
So again, I think I know that. I mean, everybody do think I know that. And to me, that's, thank you. So to me, that's not a helpful observation. What I'm looking for is not a recording of what's said. I'm looking for some advocacy of what's being said. And if all we do is send memos into the ether, I am just concerned that we're not being heard. That if everything that everybody says goes into the ether and people read documents and then, you know, what happens, happens. I think that certain points of view and certain, certain matters need to be advocated in order to rise to the level of attention where it gets addressed. And if it's just stuff that goes into the ether, there's a choice to address it or not to address it.
So I think what I can do is,
I'm here, I'm listening.
I think what I can do is, I, I, I'm sorry, can't, you're here, who's there, who's saying that? Oh, Ally. Hi. What I was gonna say is that what I can do is, um, you know, s- speak to folks at town hall and, and try to provide the, the planning board with as much of an update as I can based on what, if anything, is known at this time as far as how the public hearing presentation, if any, is gonna be orchestrated. What is gonna be included, um, beyond what's already publicly available? If there's any additional information that's gonna be available before the public hearing, and I'll try to give the, the planning board the best update as I can.
Thank you very much.
So, do you think, uh, we can have that as an agenda item then, uh, for April fourth meeting? Which is again, before the public hearing is open. Uh, that really is basically our last licks here until, you know, the bottom of the night there, it seems to be. So if we could have that, that might be very useful to us as the, the town board starts to look toward its, uh, public hearing.
Yeah, we can definitely put it on your, on your agenda so we can properly notice it and let everybody know that you're discussing it and provide you with as much information as we have at that time.
Right.
And if we know beforehand.
Yeah, even before that, if Sabrina or I have additional information even tomorrow, you know, we could, we can provide an email update to the board. In real time, as we learn.
Yeah, we're gonna find that as usual, we're short on time. And then sometimes even when we're short on time, even though Yeah, we're gonna find that as usual, we're short on time, and then sometimes even when we're short on time, even though it's timely, it's really not timely because the town board is just buried with other things as well. So it'd be nice if it stood out a little bit more in advance. So anything you can do in advance, I think would be very, very helpful to us, all of us. So that would be great.
Okay, happy to do so.
And we'll, and we'll have it on the agenda for the for the fourth.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have questions, non-substance issues or questions on process or?
Don't go to process anymore.
Okay, I'm just saying, that's all we can talk about really, because you can't talk about the application and substance.
But the process is that we want more information in a timely fashion, even though time is against us, we need it. And I'm still saying, some of these things that should be plastered around now, somehow, documents, drawings. You know, some of it, might even ask the applicant, how many times has he used that drawing? Be interested in that, because then it gives me a sense whether this is special for us or it's just something they do, so.
Okay. Anyone else anything? If not? Is there a motion to close the here, or here, close the meeting?
Well, before we do that, is there anybody, do we ask the public as a courtesy?
Ask the public as a courtesy.
I'm just here to listen.
Exactly, okay, very good.
That's very hard.
We're working on that too. Okay, is there a motion to close the public, the hearing, the meeting? I don't know what we're doing here. Second, all in favor?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night, everybody.
Night, everyone.